Thank you.
Yeah, you don't wanna, I mean, I wouldn't wanna be you.
Yes, hopefully the microphones are working and everyone can hear me.
Test one, two.
Alright, so Natalie Quinn with KARC. I'm just gonna start with kind of a little bit of update, kind of what's submitted, what we've been up to the past month, and what we're intending for the next mission. So, the last full, complete submission that we made to the board was April 22nd, and then that was presented to the board and the public at the May 2nd meeting. And we kinda had the PowerPoint presentation and went through that in detail. Since then, we've been building out some of the technical reports in response to comments from Doug at LeMont, as well as, I think there was a few things in our April 22nd submission that we said, you know, forthcoming. So we've been building out those technical reports. Since that time, also, the materials have all been posted on the town's website. So thank you for doing that. So if you go to the planning board website, right at the top, there is now a Dropbox link where you can access our most recent submission, as well as all previous submissions before that. So you can kind of see how the project has evolved. And then also what we've been doing on site. So in order to build out a stormwater pollution prevention plan in, you know, in exact detail, as well as further detail our water and sewer utility plans, we've been doing deep tests, deep soil tests on site, and infiltration tests, so that we can ground-truth the stormwater plan for the site, as well as a few additional exploratory wells on site. And so that all, unfortunately, it's a busy season out there, so it takes a minute to get to schedule these teams to get out on site. So that work kinda started happening at the end of May, just the beginning of this month, the last two weeks, when we could finally get well teams and soil, and deep test teams out on site. So our next submission, that will again be a full submission, will be on July 1st for the July 11th meeting. And within that, we will have the full built-out stormwater pollution prevention plan, or the SWIP. We will have further detailed kind of water and sewer utility plans, and I'll let Andy and Rodney give updates on these more detailed updates. I will also have a few additional materials responding to a few kind of smaller outstanding questions, and then slightly adjusted site plans to accommodate some of the findings of the soil tests. So that's update. Did you have anything else before? I'll pass it to you. I'll start with Andy. Andy, do you wanna give a little bit more detailed update on water and sewer?
Thank you. Good evening. Andy Ovind, Crawford Associates. Update begin on wastewater side. We recently obtained a water quality review for the alternate location of the wastewater tributary plant discharge, which was, if you remember, further up the site by the large resort building pond, discharging at the top of the hill, and then that would follow the water course normally down to where we originally had the discharge, which is near the eastern portion of the property, and then it would discharge through drainage soils to the unnamed tributary to the Shingle Kill. The water quality review, the results of that review were basically the same discharge limits that were put upon us, putting it down at the bottom of the hill as putting it at the top of the hill. There's essentially no change in the DEC's outlook on where we discharge, whether it was at the bottom of the hill or at the top of the hill. They did have some questions about, you know, keeping people who are on site, you know, out of the ponds, and didn't want people bathing in the ponds, that kinda thing.
We have a mic before you.
Sorry. So the results of the, the results of the water quality review basically were that the DEC had no different limits on the discharge, either at the bottom or the top. They did have concerns that they wanted to keep public from, you know, from having it up to be a bathing beach or a bathing water body, which there is no intention for the project to have anybody use the water bodies in any way as a primary contact type of situation. Let's see. There was concerns raised previously about town water supply being affected, because it is along the, along the Shingle Kill. The town water supply is fed by wells that are in close proximity to the Shingle Kill, but not actually fed directly from. I'm sure there's probably some indirect communication. However, they're about five miles away along the Shingle Kill. So far, the DEC has shown no concern over that. We certainly don't have a concern, given that it's all disinfected and well-treated.
I know you mentioned that they didn't have any concerns where you discharged higher or lower in the levels. Is the plan to discharge in the pond up towards the top or down towards the bottom? I know you're working it through with them, if they're gonna allow you to discharge up towards the top or not.
So, yeah, right now, the project is, would prefer to discharge at the top in order to keep the water on-site and allow the water course to run a little more steady, because during, say, in another month or two, that water course may not run very much at all during a dry period. And so the introduction of water, the pond, will allow for those water courses to basically stay running for the entire, for the entire year, instead of being interrupted. So that's, yeah, at the top of the hill is the current projects. There was also a question before about the town code and the discharge. I believe you had raised a question about whether or not the discharge is to Class C stream. There's a Class C stream town code that requires certain offsets, and then there was a relationship with the Shingle Kill and how that reads. And so our understanding is that any Class C, which would be in proximity to where we're discharging, down at the bottom of the hill, that has only offset buildings and another, there's another component, but it didn't specify the other list, which is the Shingle Kill, which lists a whole bunch of other things. And we're probably, from the Shingle Kill and the discharge, there's several thousand feet distance. And so the requirements in the code are 100 feet from the high watermark from the Shingle Kill. But those requirements don't extend to the Class C streams that feed the Shingle Kill. However, those Class C streams do have requirements of no buildings within 50 feet, and I think there was another one, but it didn't have anything to do with the discharge. In addition to that, that list that says these things can't be within the Shingle Kill, 100 feet of the Shingle Kill, it was limited to primary and secondary discharge from wastewater. Technically, we are providing tertiary, so that's three levels, primary, secondary, tertiary treatment, in addition to disinfection. So it would be well beyond the levels of treatment that that code would have required, even if we were within 100 feet of the Shingle Kill. Absolutely. Nope, it's understood. Moving on to update on water, we've been corresponding with both DEC and DOH, keeping them up to speed on, you know, our exploratory wells. Because this is a public water supply, the DEC doesn't really have much of any jurisdiction over the drilling of the wells, other than they do issue the numbers for the well. So that's a registration type of thing. They register the well, and then their oversight of that activity then gets passed on to the DOH. However, we have been in correspondence with the DEC and have been discussing methods and following protocols for a public water supply. In addition, also doing some additional testing. As we've mentioned before, we're monitoring wells in the proximity, and when I say proximity, it's thousands of feet, close to a quarter mile away from the wells that are being drilled. And that's a little bit more towards what DEC would require if this was like water-taking permit, which it's not. This is a public water supply. The DOH, DOH rules for public water supply don't require that additional testing. Now, of course, they're gonna love that we're doing it, and that's why we're doing it. We wanna, you know, be more proactive, understand what effects this will have on the environment. But it's not something that DEC is pulling, you know, as a regulation towards us.
Has any of your testing thus far shown that there would be inadequate water for the needs?
So currently, the testing that we have on, you know, directly from the well-drillers after testing, has shown that between the existing wells and the one well that we have full documentation for, we're very close to having that amount of water that would be expected. There's additional wells, as Natalie had pointed out, there's additional wells that have been drilled just recently. However, we don't have the full data on those just yet. We just have anecdotal evidence of, yep, we've hit water, and, you know, they're preparing to do pumping tests, the required 72-hour pump test subsequently, which will be more towards the end of this month. And then we'll have more definitive numbers that actually publish and provide for, that would demonstrate, you know, whether we need to drill more wells, but at this point, we have a fairly substantial amount of water on-site. And again, we need to follow up with more testing in order to demonstrate whether or not there's any effect on, you know, the, you know, close proximity wells, and there may be, you know, other wells that we include in that testing to, you know, see what that affects. Because this is a confined aquifer, and I think much of the neighboring wells are probably more so in the unconfined region, which is higher. And so they're not necessarily going to communicate directly at all. However, wells that are in a different direction. To date, four, I believe. Yeah, actually, I think there was really four with the Mossman property, too. So, I mean, there's, yeah. So now there's, like, again, there's now there's several, several wells across the site, and aggregate of all of those put together is adequate water supply. However, some of those wells, the Mossman well and the well that's in the, down at the east side of the property, those are, those existing wells that are down there, unfortunately, don't really conform to the DOH requirements of the number of feet of casing and the distance away from property. You have to have control over 100 feet of property, and you have to have, well, you have to have ownership of 100 feet around the well, and then control of 200 feet around the well. And so those wells just are too close to the property line, or too close to a water body, to really conform 100% to those rules. So the project's intent is to drill wells to replace those existing wells, in order to get them into compliance with full DOH regulations, instead of asking for either waivers, or have to add additional treatment in order to overcome whatever issues that may come. Yeah, most likely, what the intent is, is to drill wells to replace existing wells, and then plug those wells and cap them and abandon them per DOH requirements.
Does the testing take into account the fluctuations in, like, groundwater levels? Because it's the spring, like, last week was dry, we got rain, like, we've had a fair amount of rain, it's drier in different parts of the year, does the testing take that into account somehow?
That was a, that was a comment that was brought up earlier, and right now, we're in June, and so, and not DOH requirements, but DEC requirements, they'd rather not test in early April, May, and now we're in June, so they accept a testing that's in June. We do background testing, and so there's a longer time when we are not pumping prior to pumping. So we monitor if, say, you know, if there's a period of time when there's no rain, or people aren't using their wells, we get a good track record of what that looks like prior to the pumping, and then after the pumping is done, then there's some tracking of that as well. So it's not just during the pumping that these wells be watered, it's pre and post, in order to get as good a picture as you can.
And for the water, like, assuming there's some type of pumps to move this water around, and it's the same thing with the, do those pumps create any noise? Is this gonna be a disturbance in that way, or are they located in an area or a building so you won't be able to hear it?
For the, normally, these wells, all these pumps are basically in the wells themselves. So they're not that much different than, most everybody in this room has a well at their house. It's essentially the same thing, albeit bigger horsepower, but there's, you know, gonna be 100, 200 feet in the ground, electric motors that are silent. There may be generators that need to be run during the tests in order to provide power for these remote locations for that 72 hours, but that's, unfortunately, that's, you know, required for those 72 hours of run-up pump, and there's no physical power at that location at this time. Let's see if there's anything else. And, you know, there was raised earlier that we were doing some testing in, I believe, April, and, you know, looking at some weather data, we did have fairly significantly drier fall, fall, winter over that period of time. And I think based on that data, the DOH would probably agree that some of our earlier testing looks pretty good, and will probably likely elect to test that one well that we did early on, again, just to prove it out. But I think there's some solid data that show that we kinda came into the spring kinda dry already, anecdotally, and a lot of streams are already looking like summertime flows, and here it is in the beginning of June. Let's see. I think that's about, that's about it.
Before we move on to Braden's questions, Rich, any questions? Devin? Doug? Alright.
Alright.
Spotlight is yours.
Sure. Rod Morrison, I'm the principal engineer for the LRC group. Our firm is doing the site, general design, grading, landscaping, lighting. We've been advancing that design in more detail. I think just before our last meeting, we had had this exchange with the DEC about their interest in the upper two ponds and the streams leaving them. So we've adjusted our design to basically leave those untouched. There are no other substantial changes, no other significant changes to the layout. We're just refining the grading design along the roads, getting deeper into the stormwater design. We'd always planned to build additional ponds, drainage ways, wet areas with vegetation. The site is really perfect for that. Getting the DEC's agreement on the discharge halfway up the hillside, just below the second pond, middle pond, is terrific for those swales, so that we can continue to keep water flowing in them when there's not, when there's, say, dry periods. So we're just moving that forward. Like I said, no substantial changes to the layout at all, just refinements as we work our way around, increasing buffering, landscaping, et cetera.
It says the stormwater will be reused. How is and how were you doing that?
Yeah, the site is really perfect for this. So the water comes off, it rainfall, of course, anyway. It's gonna come off our roofs and our roads, it's gonna go back into our swale system on property, into these ponds, and then get basically reabsorbed back to groundwater table. We have a lot of storage, we're building a lot more pond storage volume on-site, so we have to comply to DEC regulations anyway, so there's no increase in runoff at any of the design storms. But we're gonna be able to show that we're storing a lot of extra volume on here, so that should be really, it's really great for the local ecology to get everything to grow, but also for receiving downstream drainage ways as well.
And how are you gonna handle moving all the soil for digging all the foundations for these buildings and everything? Where's that going to be stored? Can you tell us anything like that?
Yeah, sure. We've developed an initial phasing plan. It's going to ultimately need to go in a lot more detail, but our basic rules are going to be, it's gonna, we're going to have material storage inside the site. The whole construction project begins, phase one of which is that orange up top, with a building of the landscape buffer in there, so that we can get that in place, get it growing, begin to get some nice buffering in there, green buffering, rather than, say, just fencing. We'll move through building the basic roadways, the red lines. We'll do material stockpile in certain areas along the way, also on the interiors of the site. We won't be storing it next to abiding properties. So we'll have to, we really need a more detailed logistics plan to work that out. It'll depend, too, on what resources the contractors bring to their on-property as to accomplish, we can do it any time. My expectation is we're going to bring those specific materials that we import for road base, for instance, and so on.
Pardon me, but can you, can you say the question again, so that we can all hear your question? Sorry.
So as you build your first phase, so to speak, which is the roadway and so on, are you storing the materials locally at that location, or are you bringing them down to a common storage location, storage site?
You mean outside?
No, say at one of your parking lots or something, and then reestablish site grading and lawn establishment and so on. Are you gonna do it locally at each, maybe every so many hundred feet of that roadway? Or are you bringing it down to a common storage place while you build the road?
I would expect that we'll do at least two different storage areas. I think that that makes, that makes just the most sense. I'm obviously not the construction manager, but be able to store those, get them to arrive at the site, be able to stockpile them, so we're creating, I think, the least amount of truck movement across the property. If we were, if we were storing item four, for instance, in all one location, we've gotta move it over and over. So it may be an arrival, deposit it in the upper site, maybe in the middle, there, right where the disturbance are, and closer to the bottom. That would seem to be the most reasonable thing.
And your advanced stormwater plan will show?
Yes, we've gotta finish the full, the stormwater design first, which we're well into, and then from that comes basically a construction level stormwater plan. Yes, we'll include all that work.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna say one thing. All of the documents that we're referring to tonight, that we're pointing to, none of this is new, so this is all the documents that were provided in the prior submission. So just for purposes of the public, I just want them to know that these are the same documents that were submitted at the last and reviewed at the last meeting.
Thank you. Are you soliciting any contractors? Are you soliciting any contractors in the event that the plan, if it's approved, for advice on how to construct the project?
We're not, this group here is not the construction manager.
Once, once his phasing plan is advanced, typically what we do is we will bring on a construction manager to help us with the logistics and the more detailed phasing. So this was the initial phasing plan. As we advance his design and the review with this town, the next step will bring, to bring in a contractor to actually, you know, I wanna say build it, I don't mean build it, but we build it in the office, and we'll create documents that we can use to see if there's any constraints and so forth, and, you know, we'll provide further details. But that helps us with that construction phasing plan in each phase, and some of the questions said here. Yes, we do have, so Arlo Baxter is on this project as a construction manager, so they are working, you know, closely with us on developing these phases, and this is our first step at working with them on creating these details. And so the reason we do that on a project like this is because we wanna encounter any issues and so forth that we think that may be in the foreseeable future now, so we can design around them. Any other questions? I guess the one other thing that I did wanna state is, I think as Andy alluded to earlier, I just wanna make it clear, there are some misstatements out there. We are doing, as a team, actively pursuing to do everything that is required, and then go beyond that, right? So with DEC, I think as Andy noted, we don't necessarily, we only need the registration number from them about well drilling, but we voluntarily reach out to them as a courtesy every time we are going to do wells on-site. We're really happy that the materials are posted on the website, so that they are all easily accessible. So I think, I just wanna say on behalf of this team that we are, we are making every attempt to do everything by the book, and then go one step further. So I just wanted to have my statement on that made on the record as well. Also have, Kurtyn Manning is here, who is our traffic consultant, so if anyone has any questions for the traffic report, he's here as well.
Sure. In the traffic analysis, you had an accident analysis, but it did not include the Crow's Nest Bald Hill intersection. What's the reasoning for that?
Just for the record, Frank Philichelto, Kurtyn Manning, last name is F, Frank, I-L-I-C-I-O-T-T-O, if anyone's taking notes. We did include that intersection in the crash analysis, it's just that when we submitted the foil and got the accident records back, there were actually no crashes that took place in that period of time to report. So we did look at it, it was part of the request, but there were no crashes there.
The, you calculated the former use generated 800 daily weekend trips. We got a number of public comments that said that that was high. Can you address how you calculated that number?
Yes, and, you know, anecdotally, we agree. We used the industry standard Institute of Transportation Engineers. It's essentially our go-to manual for estimating and projecting traffic volumes. It's the easiest and most reliable way to do that in the absence of actual data collecting at the site. We know that the site is inactive, so there's no way of ascertaining exactly how many trips the site generates. So it was an approximation. What's key to note is that we didn't take any credit for whatever the prior use generated. So when we analyze traffic, sometimes when you have an active site, and you're replacing it with something different, you take the delta between what's existing, what's proposed. Nothing active on the site today. We didn't take credit for whatever traffic that it historically has generated. So whether it generated 800, 200, 300 daily trips, we didn't take any credit for that in our analysis, to be conservative.
You also use the ITA for the proposed use. So even though anecdotally, we think that those numbers are high also, we did apples to apples, and that's the standard. to apples, and that's the standard reference that we use. I think we talked about this a little bit last month, is that unfortunately with water, sewer, storm, and traffic, we always design for peak. And we use standard documents that are available, I'm sure your engineer can attest to this, so ITA is for traffic, and the New York State, Ten State Standards, am I saying that right, Rodney? Is for water and sanitary, and so they're just standard numbers that we use. Is it exactly what we think is going to occur? No, but those are the standards that we're to use for all of our reports. So you use the ITA for the prior use, existing use, and then you used it for the proposed use.
So you just mentioned that you tend to plan for peak, but the traffic study wasn't done during peak traffic for the area, which doesn't happen until for about a month. What was the reasoning behind that?
So one of the key reasons was, number one, we needed to perform the study in order to work with this project's timeline, and we run into that on other projects, and it's not unique to this one. But we're thoughtful in how we do that. The state DOT, New York State Department of Transportation publishes what are called seasonal adjustment factors. And those factors allow you to take data that you collected in one month and adjust it upwards or downwards to reflect the design month that you're looking for. So in this case, we did our study in April in order to advance this project forward, but we adjusted those volumes to reflect a June timeline, factoring that June reflects summertime, this is likely to be a draw in the summer, and that, that would reflect peak conditions. So that adjustment ended up being an 11% increase above what we counted in April.
And the initial application showed in the very small traffic study that there was a 7% increase in traffic based on the proposal from Blackhead to here. You're not taking into account Blackhead's prior traffic. Is that the reasoning why the traffic went from 7% to doubling in your current traffic study?
Not really. So it's a great question. The biggest change we made was that instead of basing trip generation off of the number of units or the keys, keys to the hotel, which was 127, we looked at the number of bedrooms, and we designed our numbers based on that, thinking that in the instance of a larger unit where you might have multiple bedrooms, you could have families that are traveling together on a holiday, you might have multiple cars coming to that, that same unit. Whereas in a traditional hotel, let's say, it's probably unlikely that you're going to have multiple cars associated with one unit. So we conservatively based the trip generation off of 266 bedrooms rather than 127 units. The other thing that I'll point out is that the ITA, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, the data that they provide us includes employees. It includes guests, employees, the whole gamut of, of traffic associated with a site. We took those numbers, then we also layered on additional employees that we know to be the case based on how this facility will operate. So the numbers tend to be very conservative purposely to try to present, in a worst-case scenario, and give you the opportunity to review that. But that's why it doubled. Again, our initial report was preliminary, it didn't include the full impact assessment, it didn't include anything that you saw after the April 22 submission. So we refined the numbers and ultimately took a more conservative path.
And then with regard to the construction traffic, do you anticipate construction to cause road damage in the event of road damage? Are you proposing anything to aid in the correction of that damage? And do you think that there needs to be any, sorry to ask a three-part question. Do you think that there needs to be any improvements to the size with signage on the roads for the proposed project compared to where everything is now?
So I'll try to start at the beginning. So could road deterioration occur? It could. Construction traffic could, you know, in certain vulnerable areas, it could, you know, deteriorate the pavement, and that should be monitored, and we're prepared to assist with that to the extent necessary for the board and for, for the Highway Department. Is the road adequate in terms of width? It is with the exception of two curbs on Bald Hills Road, Bald Hills Road North. We've identified those curbs, and in those cases, a large delivery vehicle would encroach into an oncoming lane. Now, the road volumes on these roads are all very, very, very low. They're under what it, Ashdo considers to be a, a very low volume road, less than 400 vehicles per day. So the likelihood that that truck, large truck, is going to encounter an oncoming vehicle is probably low, but in the interest of safety, what we've, what we've thought about is having, where necessary and if deemed necessary, having a flagger or an escort vehicle assist in that process for the large vehicles. Smaller truck deliveries can make, can travel on those curbs with no problem, and certainly the straightaways are not an issue. The roadways are essentially 20 feet wide, and that is adequate for, for any legal vehicle. So in summary, we do believe a monitoring program of some kind would be helpful and beneficial to the town. There's two areas that we believe need to be looked at and paid special attention to. And then regarding signage, I think that was part of your question. There are a number of areas where, just from our road inventory and study of the signs, that there could be some enhanced signage at baseline, some curb warning signs, some things like that, that we could assist the, the Highway Department with, regardless of whether this project moves forward or not. There's some common sense things that can be done. So I hope that, I hope that summarizes it accurately.
Yeah, if you could send your signing recommendations, I'll pass them along to the Highway Department, given especially they're not entirely related to this project. Those are all the questions I had. Rich?
During the construction phase, when you have large vehicles traveling over the roads, is there any remedy for damage to the roads? Like when they do a logging operation, they overload the trucks and they destroy the roads adjacent to where they're logging. You might have several large trucks running during the construction, and you might do damage to the existing road.
Yeah, and, and we recognize that, and that's why we're suggesting that it be monitored. So typically, on the, on the sides of the road is where you'll see that. Because if the truck's traveling on the road and there's some car approaching in the other direction, it'll move over naturally, and that's where you'll get that deterioration is on the side. So again, that, that needs to be monitored, and we're in a position to help with that and remedy to the extent it's necessary.
I just want to add one more thing to that. It's very common in municipalities for this type of question, and usually what you see is a pre-monitoring analysis with the Highway Superintendent, so that would be something that would be done with them. There's either video recording, or there's, you know, there's an actual inventory of the road system. And oftentimes applicants will post a bond so that the repair is done on behalf of the applicant. So that's posted with the, with the town. It's an insurance policy to the town to make sure that the work is completed, and we would expect that here in this scenario. So that would be something that would be, you know, a condition of this project, that that monitoring program is advanced and a bond is posted for, you know, any of those offsite improvements.
Got any questions?
Doug, we've got you over.
All right. Thanks. All right. I've got a number of people signed up. I ask everybody to try to restrict yourself to new comments so that we can get to everybody. In the past, there's been some people we haven't gotten to, and as a result of that, we're restricting comments to three minutes. So the first person we have... Doug's up here, Jen Schwartz. You can sit down, you can stand, whatever is most comfortable to address the board with your comments.
Okay, three minutes. I have no redundant questions from previous weeks, but I will say, I, I had asked a question in the last meeting about what percentage increase for the traffic report. Was there an answer to that? It's not in the application or the comments responses.
Mr. Chairman, we provided responses to all the public comments from the last meetings. Those were submitted and should be on the traffic website.
And I reviewed them, and my question was not answered and has not been answered.
So what is your exact question, and I'll make sure it gets answered for the next meeting.
I asked, "What percentage of traffic increase are we going to see?" And the reason I'm asking this is because you need to correct the record. The Albany Times Union and other newspapers, when you put out that first faulty report, published a 7% increase in traffic. And you have, I asked, "What is the updated number based on the empirical data you collected from the study, not made-up estimates?" The, the numbers that you put in your most recent report, your second traffic study, when you're estimating the prior use of traffic volume for the Blackhead Mountain Lodge, included numbers for 36 townhouses. Those townhouses were never built, they're not real. I have no idea why those numbers for traffic were included. So you, you need to provide a number to update the record for accuracy, and I asked that specific question last time and you did not answer it. Moving on, I would actually like to address some questions that the planning board asked tonight. So I have been in touch with the engineers and hydrologists at the DEC. And I can say that I don't think any three of the people that I've talked to would say that they love how this process has gone, or that you have provided them with more information than they've asked for. As of today, one of them was waiting back on a week for an update on how the well tests are going. They've also made it clear to the question about whether there's been any testing of how, what they're doing is going to affect the public. They can't know that unless they start seriously monitoring all the domestic wells in the area. And not, they've only reached out to people who have abutting properties for monitoring during the well test, they have not reached out to anybody else. And the reason that's so important to do is because the type of, of exploratory wells that they're drilling are extremely deep. They're 500, 600 feet, they're going directly into the aquifer. It's a type of, what's it called, fractured bedrock?
I just want to let you know you don't have to, a minute.
Joe, I think you need to give us some heads up before you immediately...
I yield my three minutes to Jen.
I yield mine to Jen too.
Yep.
They're doing a type of drilling that if you talk to hydro, I don't, are you a hydrologist? Okay. So the kind of thing that they're doing is the most complex way to get groundwater, and part of what makes it so complex is that when you go that deep and try to hit fractures in the bedrock and the aquifer, the effects of that, you have no idea how, how to predict what consequences that might be. So the wells in the house across the street might not be affected at all, but someone's well a mile or more than that away might have tremendous effects, might have a massive drop in water pressure, might have sedimentation. And so they have only reached out to the people in direct vicinity, and they're making it seem like those are the only wells that they need to reach out to. They have not made any effort, even though we've all been here asking to be engaged, to reach out to the community, to monitor our wells. And, and so you're not going to get an actual answer about how their water demand is going to affect the community unless they do a significantly bigger outreach for monitoring of wells. And it's not just me and the people who live right around, it's going to affect potentially everyone in Caro. And if, I highly recommend, if you want to get geologists involved to inquire about And that is also one of the things that DEC has repeatedly asked them, and so this idea that they're going above and beyond with what the DEC is asking for is not true. And you could ask the people at the DEC about that directly, although, I mean frankly, it's your permit, so, you know, if you, you can say that to the planning board, but it's ultimately you need to get the permits from the DEC. This whole thing about not, about you've been following protocols the whole time is also not true. It's not even worth going into. Have there been any well completion reports submitted yet? You said there was one well that looked done. The DEC has not received any, but are there any that exist? I guess you're not going to answer.
I haven't received any well completion reports. My understanding is they're still in the midst of completing those studies, so I anticipate them in the future.
Right, at some point in the future. I do have a question because of the extensive exploratory work that's going on. How many, how many holes have actually been drilled into the ground as you explore for water? Because there's no oversight and no permits involved, we have no idea what they're drilling up there, how deep they're going. I would like to know what the remediation plans are for all of those deep holes you're drilling into the mountain, into the bedrock, and who's going to oversee that and enforce it. I also talked to the DEC today to try to understand, as they're drilling all of these deep holes, what happens if our water gets screwed up now? Because they're not under a permit, there's very little recourse, and I would ask the planning board to, you know, they're talking about, they expect these things, these bonds, right? I, I urge you to protect the people of Caro now. As they're doing all this exploratory work and very deep drilling, there is no recourse if somebody's water starts to go bad now, because it's not permitted under the DEC. And it's a vague process, and I'm extremely worried about every time they punch a hole into the earth that deep, what might happen. I mean, I could, I could, I could say a lot of things, but mostly right now, I think the acute issue is that this exploratory work needs more oversight, and we need protection as a town. And that is why ultimately, like the most important thing to me, is that this board declares a positive secret as soon as possible. And the reason is because that process and the environmental impact statement will help us identify all of the potential things that could go wrong. It doesn't mean they will happen, and it doesn't mean that all of it will be bad. But right now, individuals and the town are completely vulnerable, and as all of this moves ahead, if something goes wrong, we're screwed and we have no recourse. And so I am asking you, please, take this seriously and make that happen so that you can get all of the information you need and work with other agencies to put protections in place as soon as possible. I, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
I'm not sure I can read this person's name. Gina E., somebody from Bogart Road?
No. Gina.
No. What is her name, sir?
Glenn. I just have a couple of quick questions. The actual volume of the water being drawn in approximately a 24-hour period, what were we looking at for that and the number of wells? I heard that they were looking at, hey, this is the volume we're looking for to tame. With the onsite sewage system and everything else, would it be good to have that number?
Hold the microphone.
Oh, sorry, guys.
It'd be good to have that number to identify what the actual volume is looking like that's coming out of the ground within a 24-hour period. One of the things also is, just to kind of look at, I heard there was a lot of stormwater, sorry, a lot of stormwater realignment. It was great for pulling that. Ponds, one of the questions that I have is, wouldn't that be then changing the way it's infiltrating into the ground and then back into that aquifer that, the woman before was speaking about? Real quick. The ponds that are being held used for holding water, are those going to be like clay line bottoms, so they're retaining the water for reuse? Or are they going to be actually infiltrating back in? And then the other thing was with the traffic study. On that traffic study, were you looking at a, just a single event, an opening, or did you have two sets of numbers that actually showed growth over five to 10 years, which is typical for an impact analysis? Yeah, that's, that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Elliot. Thank you, Elliot. Milton Berger. 38 Walnut Drive. I guess I'm saying that wrong. Not here. Mary, sorry, I'm going to say your last name wrong, Mary. Miniseal Nuta Jen.
Okay.
Mary Finnering. What?
You said just right. No, no effect.
Mary, there's a microphone.
You could just grab the mic over there, please.
Hold it like a...
I'll send. So, no, really, I'd signed up because I didn't know if I was going to hear anything, but I believe I heard something that the shingle kill does not feed the wells to the community water. It does.
I believe this statement that he said is the shingle kill doesn't directly go into the water supply the wells are near it, whereas...
They are fed by the shingle kill.
Right, I, I think what he was trying to say, and I could be wrong, is that there's a number of municipalities that take directly from a water, a stream of water, and the town of Caro doesn't pump from the shingle kill. I believe that's what was meant by the statement, that was my understanding of it. So that, that's what he meant by that statement. They don't pump out of the shingle kill, they pump out of a well near it. And I believe, I heard him say that the water does affect the wells, but he was, I think he was just stating it's not pumped directly out of the shingle kill.
It's fed by the shingle kill. It is, I mean, that's my understanding since as long as I've lived here. So I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned because the shingle kill is a protected drought stream. And also that I would like to reiterate what Jen said about doing a positive declaration. There are too many questions, too many things. We need to be doing a good scoping hearing to look at everything that could possibly be affected, and that's all part of the positive seeker review. And thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anybody who did not sign up that would like to make comment?
I think I signed up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you yielded to Jen, but come on up.
So when, I'm going to repeat some stuff. Well, when Joseph...
Hold it like a hot dog.
When Joseph... When Joseph stated a while back that the, we were a breaking procedure so that the community could talk openly about what's going on, I take that very seriously. And I know you don't want to hear a lot of this stuff and it's, and you don't want to hear it repeated, but we're hurting out here because what we really want is the planning board to err on the side of responsible caution and issue a positive declaration. Please show solidarity and concern for the population of Round Top around a project that has such a large impact on the future. And I also want to say about 90% of the people that speak in this room are very against the scale of this project. The 10% that are have a financial investment in it, and so that says a lot. There are more than 30 homes along Bald Hill and Blackhead Mountain and Crowsnest Road with real people in it who are part of this community and it will be, and will be impacted most severely during the construction phase. What the hell are we supposed to do for two years while the ground is pounding and shaking? Now, I don't have any notion of freezing Round Top in some nostalgic period from the past because I wasn't here during that period. I'm new. I really want to move forward. There is no separation between save Round Top and, and promoting business growth. We, we want to grow, but we want to grow responsibly. Why is there so much tension in this room? This project is just too big for the community that it's in. And that's why we're all so freaked out. So in the last few days, the well testing's been going on. And I'm glad it's going on because we all really want to know what, what's up with the water. Do we have enough water for a project of this scale? It's been constant and it's been loud. And that's just the drilling. So, you know, I, I want to have a retreat and a, a development down there, not, I want for a lot of scale, but it, you know, there's 30, at least 30 homes that pay real taxes with real people. So why is our, why, why are, why are our concerns less important than a development that's coming in from the outside? It's money. And I think really, I just want to urge, urge for a positive declaration. And can we please try to rescale this so it fits into our community more appropriately?
Is there somebody else that'd like to? Sir, I just need you to write your name down so we have it properly for the record. If you could just grab the mic.
No, not yet, Tom. Yes.
New addition to the meetings, isn't it? Thank you. I was only here to one meeting and I could put here enough. You know, most of what I'm going to say, I haven't put water in, I haven't written it down. But my first question, a question to all of you on the board. Okay, you've been at this for what, since January, a little bit more? And you know there was something in the works, right? So you're here acting as the governing body that is going to be reviewing the process, evaluating it and making and determining the steps that need to be done to ensure that the community benefits, that the people who want the project benefit, and that it's all done properly. And I think that's what we're all here for. Okay, we're back. So, you know, we would expect, many of these people have done a lot of homework in preparation for these meetings and in preparation for knowing what's going on. And as individuals who are responsible to make these decisions, what have you individually done in these six months to educate yourselves and ask the questions that needed to be asked as individuals, not as a group that you agreed on? And I'd like to ask you individually, starting with this gentleman here on my left, if he could just give me, give us a few seconds of what, you know, what you've done in terms of educating yourself.
I'm a consultant working for the town.
Okay.
So I'm reviewing the materials provided and then to the site to investigate what the site looks like.
Okay, have you done the roads and stuff like that overall? What do you think of the roads personally?
I'm not going to comment on that.
Why?
It's not my position at the moment to comment on it.
Well, we're not talking about the moment, we're talking about what your position is.
We're listening to your comments.
I'm sorry?
We are listening to your comments.
Well, no, I'm asking, my comment is I'm asking you a question. Okay, this gentleman?
I'm a planning board member.
Yeah, and, and you're planning, what homework have you done?
I took the five people making the decision.
I'm sorry?
I'm the one of the five people makes the decision the project goes ahead.
Okay, and what, and what homework and what, you know, have you done to, to improve what you already know? I said, what have you done? What kind of inquiries have you made to educate yourself and ask the questions that you personally want answered?
I'm just reviewing the planning to look at the public comment.
Okay, good. Sorry, yes, I could tell me?
I spent the last, since January, studying these things underlying, highlighting, reading the 10 towns thing, which made my head broke.
And have you done any, any research, let's say, on water effects?
Yes.
And on road effects?
Not road effects.
Okay, good. No, I don't mean the reports that they've given you on your own, independent. Okay. Okay, good. I don't know. Okay, and you, sir?
All right, so I'm just going to let you know you're down to your last minute, but like all the members of the board, I have reviewed...
I'm asking you personally.
I, I know.
Not that, not you representing them, you're representing yourself.
I have reviewed all of the documents.
Right, I knew that, but, I mean, done, outside of that, what research have you done? These people understand a lot and asking a lot of good questions. I don't hear anybody up here answering their questions specifically. I don't hear anybody over there asking, I heard a gentleman talk about road, identifying certain parts of the road that are an issue, but he didn't identify the road parts. So what road is he talking about and what parts is he talking about? That's one question. Now, in the 30 seconds I have left, have you talked with the town board about the road situation and their evaluation of it? I'll ask you.
I have discussed with the town board, but the town board doesn't evaluate roads.
Okay, so you don't have an answer.
No, I don't have an answer. It's their evaluation of it.
We're relying on someone who's speaking.
I have spoke to the highway superintendent who is in charge of the roads and asked him to evaluate it and he's working on it.
Working on it since January? Rose has been there since, for years.
No, I didn't say he's working on it since January.
Well, why not?
Because that's not the sole primary use of his job to evaluate that single road in January.
It's your job to ask him. It's your job to, we need answers. You can't conjecture, everything they've said is conjecture. Nobody has said anything, as a matter of fact, there hasn't been any plans submitted that you can draw conclusions from. These road studies do not cite other projects like this in other places that are completed and, and have studies based on those, just like you do evaluations in appraisals, you compare them to existing circumstances. You don't use state manuals. You don't use conjecture. There are hard facts, nobody has said it.
Don, I thank you for your time.
You're welcome, I've got a little more. How about this gentleman here? Do you have anything?
Don, your time is up.
You didn't say I had three minutes, you said anymore.
I told everybody I had three minutes.
Well, other people may want to ask questions too. I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to be insulting, but you're not asking, answering any questions. None of you answered my questions. This lady has done some work, I guess she's got the most work in front of her.
So I have been to the site multiple times. I was at the site when it was a golf course.
Good.
I've driven through the area multiple times, I've talked to the well drillers, I've read everything that Jen submitted, she's very knowledgeable, obviously, and I've read all the documents that CARC has submitted and I'm formulating an opinion about the site.
What's your opinion so far?
I cannot divulge that at this point.
Okay. This gentleman over here?
Hi, I've reviewed, reviewed all the project. I reviewed all the letters that I received from all you people. I've met with Green County Soil and Water.
Right.
An appointment to discuss the Shingle Kill Creek and the slides and everything and the tributaries. I meet with the zoning officer once a week and discuss the project with her. And I don't have a computer, I'm 83 and I have to do almost work by leg. I went to the site several times.
These people have done a lot of work by leg. They've spent time with the county building, the state. So you're familiar with Blackhead Mountain Road? Have you walked it? You're near the top, you realize that it's collapsing into the creek?
Where is that?
I was born and raised around Top. Okay, so you know Blackhead Mountain Road, right?
I know all the roads in Round Top. I've lived in the site several times.
So before the intersection of Bald Hill, right? There's a steep hill and there's a guardrail, right? And from that guardrail drops about 30 feet into the creek, right? The guardrail is collapsing, the road is visibly collapsing. Now, the technical, the superintendent of roads knows about it, but he's not an engineer, he's just a political, you know, he ran for office and a many people want that job, right? Admit it. And so he's, he's going to say yes to whatever anybody, anybody wants him to say. Now, I happen to live right at that spot and walk by there every day, okay? The road is collapsing and it's going to collapse more. So so far, none of you have actually put your feet on the ground on those roads, maybe when you were kids, maybe when they're dirt roads, whatever. But that road is being supported by layup, dry stacked stone from when it was a dirt road, asphalt on top of asphalt on top of asphalt. The, the debris from the road is almost buried the guardrail, okay? It's a blind spot, okay? If anybody goes off, they're in the creek. Got it? So none of you know that. I'm not faulting you, I'm just saying, if your feet are on the ground, you know it's...
Have you made the highway superintendent aware of that?
Yes, numerous times. Okay, so I'm, I'm going to relinquish my time to anyone who would like to expand on what I've said, but so far, it's been smoke and mirrors. I hate to say that, but nobody's come away with a piece of paper given by any of you or anybody from you that says this is what the facts are. There's nothing in writing other than the minutes. There's nothing coming forth from anybody. So I don't know what you're going to make your decisions on. It's all conjecture. It's all conjecture. The Maspins, we owe it to them to want to support them. It's the town that we're concerned about. It's the town, you people represent us. Because you're going to still be in this town if something happens, if our wells go dry. And we're not going to be going to the town, we're going to you individually. Because you're the ones that are proof of it. So I, I'm not trying to be radical here, but let's get serious, let's get real. It's January, it's June. These people would like to get this project going, so ask some real questions and get some real answers, you know, soon. These people are putting a lot of time, but they're all coming in with scripts. They know what the questions are going to be because they know what the questions were from the last time. I mean, this is easy, but we have to get real.
I got a good idea.
Good.
Why don't you apply to be on the planning board?
Why?
Because you have opinions.
I have what? I have what? They're not opinions, they're what I'm supposed to be doing with the open mic, you know? I'd like to know what your opinions are. That's what I'd like to know. Can't keep mum, can't keep saying, well, I'm not divulging this, what is it, secret? I think I've said enough, I don't mean to be insulting because I don't mean, but these things need to be said. Thank you.
Sir, your name?
My name's Russell Ferguson.
Can you spell that for me?
Which one?
Ferguson.
This one? L? Test it, test it. All right, this won't take very long. This is my first time at one of these meetings. I live at 542 Bald Hill Road North. And I've lived there for 27 years. And I've never had a problem with my well. And I just lost pressure significantly over the last month and just had to replace my pipes, my pump. And I was, I came here to maybe hear something, hear why, or if there was a link, I'm not saying there is, I don't know, right? I'm not trying to blame anybody here, but I do want to put it on the record that it is possible that there's already an impact. I don't, I don't really know, right? And I'm wondering if there are any other folks in the Round Top area that have lost pressure and are having these issues. I've never, I've never had a problem with pressure. Now I do. So it could be a fluke, could be a coincidence, or it could be related. And I, I just think it's something that folks should consider. Pardon me? The well's been there a while, the pump is only 10 years old.
Can I, can I just say, I, I asked the DEC about this because a few people, may I answer the question, unless you would like to tell them?
That, that's all I... That, that's all I, that's all I had, really. Just, uh, I'm curious.
I can tell you what you should do.
I spoke to the D E C about this because they, they said that the best, if anything happens that you notice a change in water pressure, discoloration, or something acute happens, um, they said that right now, the best agency to report it to is the New York State Department of Health. They have the best reporting, just kind of collect information instead of the D E C, which is looking right now more about a water withdrawal permit, which is quantity, but the Department of Health is responsible for investigating if something is going wrong with your well. So I put, you know, anyone, anyone who experiences anything, even if you're not sure if it's related or not, it doesn't matter, because there's ongoing drilling that could affect anybody at any time, please, if you have any issues, document it, like, take some photos and call the New York State Department of Health, just like Google that, and there's like phone numbers on there, and they'll help you out, but like, everybody should be doing that, getting it on the record.
Thank you.
And then if you, if the town has any other...
Come and sign in.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, I really want to expand on what Mr. Burr has said because I want to explain the problem with the road. I take a lot of exception to the fact that everybody seems to be mentioning and they're really concerned in the report, it seems, uh, about Bald Hill, but the real delicate problem is Blackhead and Crowsnest, and there are, the entire neighborhood knows how dangerous that intersection is under low flow, but we've got an explanation as to why the road is collapsing and at the, at this time absolutely cannot take what you're trying to put it under. This is the piece of road that, um, Mr. Burr is referring to. This is what the collapsed spot, this is what it started with, it's a dirt road. The foundation of upper part of Crowsnest is a dirt road foundation with shale piled on top, which is collapsing, that the superintendent well knows because he's on that road multiple times a week, multiple times a week. He's up that road at Crowsnest multiple, he knows about this. This...
Blackhead. Brenda.
This is Black, oh, I'm sorry, this is Blackhead, just before you rise up to the intersection of Crowsnest. This is what's collapsing. This is actually there. We've had this there for weeks and weeks, he's argued about it in the past. You're running these trucks already, already, uh, over that, going down, going up, with no escort, which I do not consider above and beyond safety for the neighborhood, because this road, once you get above Bald Hill, is not twenty feet at any point because we literally measured it like every ten feet, physically with a tape measure. And everybody's concerned about two turns on Bald Hill, but this is the dangerous intersection. This is the collapsing road. We watched, uh, uh, the well drilling truck had to make a K to navigate the turn, to turn onto at that intersection of Crowsnest. It's getting beat up already, and it's barely mentioned. That's the dangerous road, and it's collapsing. And, um, I will send you, I'll make you send...
Do you want to submit those as part of the record, or would you like to take them back?
I'll take them back and submit them tomorrow, after I make copies.
Understood.
These are the originals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, aside from, okay, I know that took a lot, but I do have a question. This is so critical, I keep addressing this. I live right by the buildings that are coming down, I can't find any mention in the demolition C-1 map, it just mentions taking it down. I want to understand about the asbestos coming down there. I'm gonna be there, the dogs are gonna be there, multiple dogs, multiple chickens, there's asbestos there. I don't men, hear anything or find anything about, did they do a survey? What's mitigation involve? What about the neighbors who are like so close? I also, you know, asked about the trees on that road, I counted them, some of those trees will have to come down, I'd like to know about that. We are literally thirty feet from where that's gonna happen. So I don't consider it above and beyond leaving people wondering, oh my God, things are coming down thirty feet from me. Oh, dust in the air. I really have a serious concern, I'll just keep bringing it up till someone shows me, spots me, or explains to me how that's either being planned for, planned for the neighbors, or what's being done to assure the neighbors, because again, a guy, uh, you know, wanted to buy a bunch of buildings from town, and as soon as he found out what's involved, he's like, okay, you know, the town supervisor looked at me like he sunk that, sorry. So I really want that answer for safety. So the things that I'm talking about here, safety, this is community safety, neighbor safety, and community safety, because right now, we, maybe we can't stop this, but we have to survive your construction. I want to survive your construction. I don't want to get killed on the road because the driver tells me that he managed, it's eleven-nine. You could tell me eleven-nine, that means you're definitely navigating down the center line. And when I asked him how we get back down, if we encounter you, he said, you'll just have to back up. I said, back up to where? There's rock walls if, if it's on the turn. So, you know, I understand adhering to, to rules and regulations and road regulation, D O T, we all have to be practical and not use imaginary numbers for, you know, how many trips an hour that never existed. So, there we go, back to traffic and, and, and the asbestos. That's all I have, I thank you for your time, I will submit these photographs.
Ma'am, if you could just tell me your name so I can write it down? How do you spell Pessella? Thank you, Mary.
Uh, as the former owner of Forty-five Crowsnest in the eighties and nineties, I know exactly what Brenda's talking about, and my family's been, well, let's see, I have pro, I have photos of my grandmother and great-grandmother at Shingle Kill Falls around nineteen-ten. So our family's been around here for a bit, and I also, uh, second, third, whatever you want to call it, the call for the sacrilegious declaration. And on top of that, uh, as Brenda mentioned with asbestos, as old as these buildings are, I grew up around the construction industry, as old as those buildings are, I will guarantee there's asbestos. So, mitig, proper mitigation, even though they're, even if the buildings are being taken down, proper mitigation really has to happen. And the third question is more of a general question. Why so big? Why so big? The scale is just out of proportion to the neighborhood. And it just, it doesn't fit, it doesn't make any sense. I've heard people refer to it as dropping Yankee Stadium on top of Blackhead Mountain. And how, it doesn't make sense in the size, and it doesn't make sense in how we've got, with that enormous, enormous asbestos spoken of at a couple of meetings, how the name, you know, how are the name and Winkle, do you plan on making your money back? Hello? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mary. Sir, anybody else who didn't sign up who would like to make comment?
Can I just say one quick thing, Joe? I know I conceded my three minutes to Jen, but I would like to correct a statement that was made by the man who was talking about the traffic study. Two weeks ago, we spent about an hour and a half one afternoon measuring the width of Blackhead Mountain Road. There was no spot from the intersection of north-south Bald Hills Road going down Blackhead Mountain Road, probably a good quarter of a mile, that was twenty feet wide. In fact, there was only one spot that the road was nineteen feet wide. Mostly, it was eighteen-seven, eighteen-nine, so maybe all the way down the bottom of Blackhead, when you hit Hart's Content, it might be twenty, nowhere else. And all it is, is a series of ups and downs, S-curves, sharp curves, blind curves, you name it, Blackhead Mountain Road has it. And I think, you know, we all witnessed just in the past two weeks, when this massive truck pulled a big excavator up to Blackhead, that there was no way another vehicle was gonna be able to pass on that road. There was no escort, the flags were not visible, it did say across the front of the truck, "Wide load," but that was basically it. So, you know, something's gonna happen because the roads can't deal with it, and if you people ignore that, you've really got your head in the sand. And you can say that the roads are not your issue, but if you approve this project, it's on you. So just giving you a heads up, you're not getting the right information. Go out there with a tape measure and do what I did.
Thank you, Mary. Can I get a motion to end the meeting?
Can I just add one quick thing? I'll take twenty seconds. I know I conceded my time, you know, it took thirty, but I just, a really quick thing. I just wonder if this whole massive thing that's built, what's gonna happen in five years when it becomes blocked? You're gonna have this...
My crystal ball is as good as yours, Mary.
No, but it's, it's gonna happen, there's not enough enticement to something that big, and it's gonna happen.
And you can declare a positive secret so we can find out.
The point is, we need to be protected so that regardless of what happens...
Can I get a motion to end the meeting, please?
Do a positive secret.
Second, and four. Thank you.